The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
Good evening. The February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Marion County School Board is now called to order. Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each school day, I would like to ask that we also observe a moment of silence, just like I said, mirroring and modeling what our students do every day. So if you'll pause with me for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. James to read our board commitment statement.
We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Dr. James. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I request everyone in the audience to please silence their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student disciplinary matter, please complete a lime-green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District One.
Here.
Mrs. Lori Conrad, District Two. Mr. Eric Cummings, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District Four.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District Five.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez. Dr. Gullett, would you please introduce the member of your team who will be introducing those giving tonight's inspirational pledge?
Certainly. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Great to see you. Happy Valentine's Day. My pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Ben Whitehouse, our Director for Student Pathways and Assessment. And he is going to come up and introduce students from our Southeastern Youth Fair, representing a couple of our outstanding schools and career and technical education tonight. So welcome, Mr. Whitehouse.
Thank you, ma'am. And good evening, Chair Campbell, Vice Chair Throer, Board Members, Superintendent Gullett, Attorney Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. Tonight, we would like to recognize February as Career and Technical Education Month. CTE Month is observed to recognize the accomplishments of students and educators, two of which you will hear from in just a moment, and highlight the collaboration with businesses and industry partners that contribute to the success of our programs. Career and technical education helps fuel the growth and success of our local economy by offering students the opportunity to pursue hands-on learning in critical areas of growth, including healthcare, agriculture, advanced manufacturing, and information technology. We offer CTE programs at all of our middle and high schools with over ten thousand students enrolled in one of forty different CTE pathways available. These programs not only allow students to acquire industry certifications or college credits to get a head start on their career, but also teaches valuable life skills that will benefit our students wherever they go. In addition, our students now have the opportunity to participate in career dual enrollment through Marion Technical College, creating new and exciting pathways for all our high school students. Through great partnerships with our local chamber, the Career Source Board, and many local business leaders, our students get the opportunity to engage in meaningful learning in their field of interest through state-of-the-art technology, job shadowing, guest speakers, and project-based learning, adding true relevance to our education system. Speaking of CTE, February is also the month for the Southeastern Youth Fair. And to highlight the great work our students are doing, we have Kylie Summerlin from Bellevue High School and Frank Sekuta from Forest High School, representing our local FFA and 4-H programs. Kylie.
Thank you. Good evening, Marion County School Board members and guests. My name is Kylie Summerlin, and I am a product of Career and Technical Education Program. February is an exciting month, not only because of the Southeastern Youth Fair, but also because it is CTE Month. Our CTE programs offer cutting-edge, rigorous, and relevant career technical and education for our students. I am here tonight representing the numerous 4-H and FFA members who participate in the annual Southeastern Youth Fair. Currently, I am serving as the Vice President of the Marion County FFA Federation, a Southeastern Youth Fair Ambassador, and I am a member of the Lucky Learners 4-H Club. February twenty-third marks the start of the most exciting and rewarding week for Marion County 4-H and FFA members. These students spend year-round planning and preparing for their exhibits. When thinking of the Southeastern Youth Fair, you may think of pigs, lambs, and cattle. Even though our market shows are a big highlight of the week, there is more to these livestock projects than just walking an animal around the arena. I have shown pigs for five years and shown cattle for three. Exhibitors like myself spend countless hours and early mornings getting ready for our shows. Before we can show, we must complete a twenty-five-page record book documenting our expenses. It takes time and patience to train these animals. A successful livestock project is one that doesn't happen overnight. In my years showing livestock at the fair, I have learned skills that I would not get anywhere else. The fair has taught me leadership, professionalism. The fair has taught me to be humble when winning and thankful when losing. The fair has given me some of the best memories and friendships. The fair has paved a path for me to be successful in my future career. Aside from having livestock, there is so much more to do at the fair. The fair offers competitions that caters to all interests. There are contests such as sewing, home arts, kitchen shows, including cakes, cookies, plant identification, and even tractor driving. New this year, students ages five to seven can participate in a stick horse show. The diversity of all the events allows Marion County students from all backgrounds to connect. Personally, I don't come from an agriculture background. In the sixth grade, I joined FFA and started participating in the fair, knowing nothing about livestock or farming. Now, almost six years later, I have an endless knowledge about agriculture and production. I was able to find my passion for agriculture and a voice to advocate for the industry. There are also volunteer opportunities for students. Ambassadors help the fair run smoothly from day to day, while others assist with ag ventures. On March first and second, over eight hundred second graders from different Marion County schools have a firsthand look at Marion County's and Florida's major agricultural commodities during the Marion County Farm Bureau's Ag Ventures Program. Students and teachers explore interactive exhibits and attend hands-on workshops as part of the event and tour. I would personally like to thank you for your time and invite you all to the twenty twenty-three Southeastern Youth Fair. It will be held from February twenty-third to March fourth at the Southeastern Livestock Pavilion right here in Ocala. I hope you choose to attend so that you all can see something that means so much to me and many other Marion County students. If you do get the chance to come, I personally would love to show you around. Again, thank you all so much for your time.
Hello. My name is Frank Sekuta. I attend Forest High School. I am in 4-H FFA. I've been a part of the show for, I believe, six years. Kind of gets hard to count after a while. There's a lot of late nights, early mornings. There's a lot that goes into the fair, as Kylie was saying. There are ambassadors, record books, working with your animal beforehand and after him. So many people look at the fair as a one-week event. It is much more than that. It is a year-round, never-ending cycle. And then the fair helps... Sorry. The fair helps set us up to help feed America because farmers are truly the backbone of America. I would just like to thank you for allowing us students to be able to go and participate in this, make so many good memories, and learn so many valuable lessons. I was asked tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we all could, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board, I always like for us to take pictures with students when they're here. If you would indulge me.
Yes.
If the two of you wouldn't mind, we would love to take a picture. We will hold up our program. Thank you so much, Kylie and Frank, for being wonderful representatives from our high schools and our FFA and 4-H programs. Southeastern Youth Fair is always a highlight every year, and this program is no joke. There's a lot that goes on at the Southeastern Youth Fair, jam-packed full of activities for students to learn and grow and excel. So thank you so much to the folks who set that up, and Sarah Laffey and her team as well. Okay, Dr. Gullett.
Thank you. I recommend approval of the agenda for the February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three school board meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the auto-recording included as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of items D twenty-three point one, D twenty-three point two that have been placed under discussion, and item C ten point one and C twenty-two point one that have been pulled and placed under discussion. Item twenty-four point one has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. Board, I inadvertently skipped over item three point one, so I'd like to do that now. We would like to take the time to recognize donations sent in from several gracious individuals and organizations. They are included in our board packet, but those include the Ocala Marion County Association of Reliturs to Hillcrest School, Lumio to Lake Weir High School, Marion Cultural Alliance to Bellevue High School, and the Felburn Foundation to Curriculum Instruction and Digital Learning. As we all are aware, but the community may not be aware, we used to have to approve each donation as it came in before those dollars could actually get to the location where the donation was going. And our policy has now changed, but we still want to ensure that we are able to thank the generosity to the schools in our community and to those generous donors. The overall total donation from those four donations was twenty-five thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-nine cents. So thank you so much for continued support of our schools and students. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve October twenty-fourth minutes.
Motion by Vice Chair Throer.
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two School Board Meeting?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November third, twenty twenty-two Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Throer. Is... Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November eighth, twenty twenty-two School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve the November eighth minutes.
Motion by Vice Chair Throer?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Throer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two Special Organizational School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two Special School Board Meeting, Board of Directors, Leasing Corporation, organizational meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Vice Chair Throer?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December fifth, twenty twenty-two Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve the December thirteenth minutes.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Throer, second by Reverend Cummings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Throer. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. You did it. Thank you, Ms. Martinez Lopez, for getting us through all those minutes. Thank you so much. We're caught up. That was a lot. Terrific. Thank you. So I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board today.
Thank you, Chair Campbell. In compliance with Section two-eight, six point oh-one-one-four of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items or a matter relating directly to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided twenty-four hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator or staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they'll be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Madam Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Timothy Ennis.
Mr. Ennis. Timothy Ennis. There you go. Mr. Ennis, as you step up to the microphone, if you have any trouble with the audio, let us know. We'll try to adjust for you, okay?
Timothy M. Ennis, E-N-N-I-S. I'm here to raise some concerns. I have a young girl... My youngest is in Nasiola School. I've had a long battle with the administration. I've talked to the school board many times through Nancy. I've just passed out some paperwork. When you get the paperwork, you can look at the first page. The first page is write-up. It's honestly the first write-up I've received this year. You can also look at the write-up, and you can question why the dean dated it on the sixth, but the actual write-up was on the second. It does not have my signature. It does not have my daughter's signature. Why is there a lapse in time? This also happens to be about the same time that I asked to have a hard copy sent to me because I didn't know it. I do not use the Internet. I went to the Internet, checked my son's grade, and I checked my daughter's portal. I found in astonishment, as you'll see in the paperwork there, there's approximately twenty in-school suspensions that occurred January, February. I was never notified of any of them. How is that possible? I was also told my daughter was touched inappropriately by a student. By my daughter. She did not come to me until three weeks after it. I was never informed by the school. Why not? Why is this child who did this still in the same classroom as my daughter? Well, go back to last year. There was an incident my daughter had a baker's act pulled on her. I couldn't figure out in any way what was going on, why my daughter would do all this. Through the course of this year, it came back out to me that there was an incident two weeks prior to that. In that incident, my daughter was verbally sexually assaulted by a student in your school. I've had multiple conversations with many people in your school system. The one thing that I was repeatedly told, "We can't affect that young man's education." Because I asked why he hasn't been removed from my daughter's presence. Not only wasn't he removed last year, this year he was put back into the same curriculum as my daughter. Is this how we treat a victim in Marion County? There's a lot more. I could stay in here for a long time. I'm at my wit's end. With these things that are going on, my daughter's been bullied. According to the state statute, I should have been given the Paperwork About Hope Scholarship. I was not. There's many things that I have not been given. The best thing I ever did, like I said, was finally go on my daughter's portal because I took pictures. Because you all have access to this. Go to my daughter's portal, raise questions, because what you see in those pictures is not what you're going to find on her portal now. It's been erased. Marion County has a lot of explaining. You have not only just disrupted my daughter's education, you have affected her mentally now. About all I got to say. I'm looking for answers.
Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Dr. Gullett, do you have a member of your team who can speak with this gentleman?
Mr. Fraser Ken, Madam Chair. I would also let the board know that I've met Mr. Ennis. We met today in person. So there are at least six items that we agreed I was going to follow up on and do some investigative work on and would get back to Mr. Ennis.
And to the board, I would ask you to refrain from judgment or comment until this is addressed by the superintendent's staff because as you may sit in a quasi-judicial capacity regarding student disciplinary complaints at a future date. Okay?
Thank you.
I do want to say something, Madam Chair. Mr. Ennis, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
I'm hoping maybe this will do something.
I think...
I've tried every other avenue.
What I ask you to do is to give the superintendent and her team a chance to address the issues.
I'm... I'm sorry.
It's okay. He was... Can you hear me better?
A little better.
Okay. He's gonna... You're gonna ask to... I guess you've spoken with the superintendent, and Mr. Fraser, who's behind you and is standing, is going to be able to discuss further with you. And what our board member was saying is that he looks forward to having you help get this issue resolved with you through the superintendent and her staff. So I understand you've already met with her. There's another representative, an area superintendent, who can discuss things with you as well. And hopefully, that'll be on the path to resolution. And you should receive follow-up on that as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Ennis. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Bishop David Stockton?
James David Stockton, S-T-O-C-K-T-O-N. First and foremost, hello and greetings. It seems like it's been a long time since I've seen many of you. I want to say first and foremost, for most of you who I have personal contacts with, thank you for your care and concern in the loss of my passing of my son. But I'm here tonight as president of the NAACP because I have been challenged and charged to ask or make two formal statements of concern in regards to what is transpiring or what could transpire in our school system. The first and foremost is, literally while I was sitting in the funeral director's office making plans, my phone began to ring like crazy from different citizens around Marion County, so much so that I began to answer them. And they were all, Madam Chair, in regards to a permission slip being sent home to our students in regards to ask permission if the children could learn or sing and perform James Weldon Johnson, which has so much become what we now call the Black National Anthem. Concern for verses and words and verbiage is the pretense that was given. But upon further review and study, looking at our own Star Spangled Banner, the... But upon further review and study, looking at our own Star Spangled Banner, the same type of verbiage and connotation is both sang and spoken in both songs, but they are historical factors of what people went through to help make this America great that we all talk about. And so I'm very concerned about how that is being perceived in the community because the community, though some maybe didn't care about it or didn't bother them at all, there's several parents and community individuals that are quite concerned that, yes, this has happened, but what has been the follow-up? It's not right. I think I would speak for those. I don't think there's been permission during Hispanic Awareness Month for permission to learn and do certain things that celebrate the great Hispanic culture that has helped not only our nation but this great state of Florida. I don't hear conversations or permission slips going out to hear or learn anything about Asian-American history or Native American history. But for some reason, in this current tumultuous time that we're living in now where people are trying to create reasons to be divided, we hear that there needs to be permission to sing, lift every voice and sing. I'm very concerned about the outcome and I think it's very important for the community to understand and to hear from not only the school board but also the school system itself. What, how, what are your feelings? What are your thoughts? How is this handled? Is this right? Is this what we're allowing? Or is this what we're gonna deal with? To stop what divides this great country. Because regardless of what anybody thinks, the mere fact that we're here, how we here, all of us, regardless if you're black, brown, or broke, however you got here, there's a historical piece that makes up our great state and our great nation. That would be my first concern. And with my last minute and thirty seconds, also while I am trying to eulogize and even ask to preach my son's funeral, I couldn't do it, I get a call wanting to know why. There's gonna be dogs and some kind of security force going in to sporadically check our children. I understand that because of Marjorie Douglas and all of these things that have happened, that we want to be safe. But my fear, Madam Chair, is that without proper education of the community of the process, it is going to cause a hysteria and a problem that we do not want to have here in Marion County. It is important that we understand that we all are treated as individuals and humans. We're not just spot checking. Because my grandfather told me a long time ago, if people don't know something about you, they'll make up something on you. And I'm concerned about what's being made up. I pray it's all made up on behaviors and actions of our school board and our school system. That's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Stockton. We appreciate you. And congratulations on your nomination to our Black History Museum. We'll see you Saturday evening.
I do want to, Bishop Stockton, thank you for bringing those two very, very important items forward on the permission slip. I do know that it was brought forward to the superintendent. I don't know what happened beyond that. And then the search procedures, the search, administrative search with the dogs. I think at some point we'll probably have a conversation about that. I'm not sure, Madam Chair. But I know that's something that's coming forward. And I do know that, what is it, Skyward's call went out about that? So that has gone out?
It's gone out a few times, yes.
Yeah.
So perhaps during your comments, Dr. Gullett, if you'd like to give us a little Coming back out of recess at 6:07 PM, for those watching at home, please understand we had a power surge and we didn't know what happened there for a moment. But we're back, so here we are. I believe where we were, Dr. Gullett, you were going to speak to briefly or say to your board comment or to the end comment, so just tell me if you'd like to-
I'll be happy to do that now, Madam Chair. So the couple of items that Bishop Stockton brought forward, the first about permission slips, I want to be really clear with the board that when I learned about that, that is not something that district supports. It's not a practice that we were aware of and we do not support. I cannot say anymore about the matter. It's a personnel matter, so of course I'm not at liberty to discuss that, beyond that point, but that is not something that we support or condone. To the other, the security, I would probably invite you to talk with Mr. McFadden. Mr. McFadden is leading our work with Safe Schools and our committee and wholeheartedly supports this process as a multifaceted approach to safety. So I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, another speaker?
Jamie Niswenger.
Hello, my name is Jamie Niswenger. Last name is N-I-S-W-O-N-G-E-R. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of my child, and he's had problems in his school for the last two years now. For the last two years, I have been reaching out to the elementary school, above the elementary school, and anybody else who would listen. I've gotten nowhere, absolutely nowhere. My child has had problems with his teacher. Last year, we talked it out. We sat down with the teacher. We came to common grounds. We were able to get on, get through the year, and that, you know, that was fine. Apparently, her version didn't match my version, but we came to an agreement and we made it through the year. This year, we've had problems in the classroom. Like, not just your typical problems, like kids with major behavioral issues, throwing desks, stomping on children, stuff you don't need your seven-year-old seeing. I mean, I wouldn't do that in my home. I don't expect to send my child to school and have him see such actions. This is how kids pick up learned behaviors. I don't need my kids with those learned behaviors. I've reached out to the school. September, I asked for my child's class to be switched. I wasn't getting nowhere with the teacher. I wasn't getting nowhere with the principal, the assistant principal. They ignored my request, told me my child was fine. So I kept sending emails, issue after issue. I got his last report card. Grades weren't put in, just missing. I was told, "Well, it doesn't affect your child's grade." You're right, it's not factored into the overall grade, but if your kid's failing and like two hundreds aren't put in, that could drastically bring up your child's grade. So yes, it does affect it, whether it's averaged in or not. When you look at the big picture, there's an effect on the child. I now have a report card at home that doesn't have factual grades on it because they had to go in after the fact to put in the grades. I brought up the issue a week ago because there was one math assessment that was not put in. She told me, "He's not getting the grade because his name wasn't on there." I reached out. I was told that's not the policy. The assistant principal reached out to me and told me, "He's still not getting the grade. The teacher has no idea what his grade was." Great. Another thing, we have no idea if he knows the knowledge or doesn't. There's a lot of stuff he doesn't know. He can't learn in the classroom. I was reached out to by somebody above the school principal, I think Ms. Hembrook. She told me they were working on getting another second-grade teacher. All the classes are full with the exception of one, but they're not willing to put anybody in that seat. They're saving it for an ESC student. May or may not come, but right now, you have kids that are not learning in that school. They're not learning. The kids talk, they can't hear the teacher. The teacher tells the parents, "Well, your child needs to listen. They can't hear you, they can't listen, they can't learn." So that's where I got with that. Last year, I reached out to the school on events, parent events, kid events, get the parents in the school, get the parents and the kids learning together. I was told they plan their events a year in, a year in advance, so last year was all planned like it was still gonna be a COVID year. Okay, I took that as my answer because there's nothing I can do. This year going, no new events. We've done three fundraisers that do not directly affect my children. I'm really fundraiser to hell. I mean, if we can get a fundraiser that affects my children, that would be great. We've had no field trips. We've had one parent event that had so, such a great turnout. The parents couldn't hardly get into the events because they were a limited number of students. We need more. We need more parent-student involvement in the school. Parents are ready, we're ready, we want to be there. There's nothing for us to be there for. I mean, they keep saying parents need to reach out. I watch every school board meeting from home, feeding and bathing and doing homework with my children. I don't see a point to sit here. I know we always talk about parents. Trust me, we're there, we're listening, we're watching. When something big enough appears, we'll make it here. But it's better for the parents to be home with their kids where they belong. But I just had to come because I think that nobody's, I'm obviously not being heard. This is two years now, and there's still no change. The class sizes at the Denellin Elementary are overclass, they're over too many kids. So I don't know why we haven't brought another teacher in by now. So I don't know. It's a little much, so, yeah. That's it. So I do thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Niswenger, for making the effort to be here, first and foremost, and for your continued parent engagement. Dr. Gullett, could Dr. Hembrook speak with this parent again about potential solutions to her?
Yes, certainly. Thank you, Madam Chair. And Dr. Hembrook will follow up with me and with the board as to the resolution.
Ms. Niswenger, thank you for being engaged. Thank you for the emails as well and for making sure that you're the advocate for your son. Keep, keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez-Lopez?
Good evening, Melanie Slaughter, S-L-A-U-G-H-T-E-R. I first wanted to come before the board to thank the board and to thank Dr. Gullett specifically and also wanted to give a shout-out to Donnie Tucker, who are going to be actively involved this weekend and the weekend of March 4th at MCYFL, bringing resources to parents and students that are getting signed up for football for next year. I've heard great community reaction to the fact that they're going to be out there. Parents seem very excited to learn. They're gonna learn about Skyward, summer school, all types of resources that the Marion County Public School has. I want to especially thank the volunteers, who I don't know who they are, but you are above and beyond by going out on a Saturday and taking time away from your family to volunteer to provide resources to parents and students in Marion County, and you should be applauded for that. So the other thing I wanted to address with the board is something that I've already talked to Chair Campbell about and the principal at my son's school, Mr. Rembert at Forest High School, who's an excellent principal. There was an opening for a dean, which is much needed at Forest High School. And because this candidate was the most qualified and she was also bilingual, she was taken from my son's Spanish class and promoted to dean. I got an email that they were gonna keep the same, they were gonna do the exact same work and everything was gonna be fine, and you fast-forward it four weeks and I'm gonna sign my son up for Spanish II. He doesn't want to take Spanish II. Why not? Well, all we've done the last four weeks is play on the phones in class and we haven't learned anything because we've had subs every day, which he felt like he'd won the lottery when that happened. It's not like he's complaining because he didn't have to do anything for four weeks, but it caused a problem that I was not aware of. I immediately made, called Mr. Rembert, and I called Ms. Campbell just to let them know. Mr. Rembert called me back, he's on top of it. But I am all for promoting people from within. This teacher deserved the promotion. I'm not saying that she didn't. She's an excellent candidate, it's always better to promote from within. But there has to be some type of monitoring of subs, especially going into a Spanish class, which there is no chance of you getting somebody mid-year to fill that position. I'm just telling you. I mean, I think it would be hard enough to fill one over the summer when, when people are going in and out. And teachers cannot transfer. I mean, I know a lot of teachers that want to move schools. They cannot do it except over the summer. Why not? Because they can't pull a teacher out of the class. And you can't do it when you're promoting someone, in my opinion, because it is not best for students. And the problem is, the pyramid that this school board is run under needs to be inverted. And you need to put the teachers at the top of it because they're the ones that are going to make you an aid district. None of these other people are. I'm just being quite honest with you. Whether we have three or four deans, you're not gonna make somebody proficient in Spanish. And I think you need the deans, I'm not saying that you don't. I think a decision was made in the best interest of all the students at Forest High School, but you cannot have subs in there with no monitoring and not knowing what they're doing and have a fifteen-year-old boy who thinks he's won the lottery playing on his phone for four weeks. Because that is not going to help him learn anything. And had it not been for that conversation of him having to sign up for next year, I never would have known. He would have sat in there the entire semester, he wouldn't have learned a thing, and he would have gone into Spanish II crying to me that I need a tutor or something, which I can afford to pay for, but most people cannot. And so I don't want to do all the great things we're doing at MCYFL and making these kids learn and be proficient and do excellent in school and having teachers sacrifice their weekends, to throw it all away because we want to pull a teacher out of a classroom to fill a position in administration, quite frankly. And administration can never be more important than the teacher. It cannot. Not if you're gonna be a aid district. It cannot be. You have to put teachers above everything else. And until we do that as a board and as a district and as a unit, we are never going to change things. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Slaughter. I appreciate it. I'm grateful that you reached out to me and gave me that information. I know of other positions that we recently have had that they're not moving for that very purpose. Conversation with another departmental position, that they're not moving. And so I'm not certain, I understand potentially why the decision was made, but you make a very strong point that we need to seriously consider how we're promoting and at what time we're promoting. Thank you. Appreciate your continued support and involvement. Ms. Martinez-Lopez?
That's it. Thank you so much. And thank you to all our speakers this evening. May I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda items C-8.1 through C-21.1, with the exception of items D-23.1 and D-23.2 that have been placed under discussion, and item C-10.1 and C-22.1 that have been pulled and placed under discussion, and item D-24.1 that has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower. Second by Reverend Cummings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 4-0. May I have a motion to approve the replacement of the HVAC cooling tower? Sorry, I'm just reading in the script. I want to make sure I say this correctly.
Yep.
HVAC cooling towers and associated equipment at MTI Project 23-126. May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Is there any discussion on this item?
I have a-
Okay. Vice Chair.
Thank you. As we continue to try to make decisions about our aging buildings, it's clear that, at least for now, this space and all of former Forest High School, MTI, and now the East District Office is being put to a lot of use. So unless and until that changes, the, something has to be done with, with the air conditioning. You know, these buildings were, were not built to really have very good ventilation, so I don't know that it's anything that we can put off. So I don't know that it's anything that we can put off any longer. I believe years ago, we were hopeful not to have to put a lot of extra money into this space because we weren't sure what we were going to do with it. Well, at this point, it's pretty clear it's being used for a lot of things, including Tiny Academy or Tiny Institute. So, um, I'm going to vote yes for this because at this point, there really isn't, um, any quick options for any other solutions other than the, to continue to use this aging building for lots of functions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. And thank you for bringing this up because actually I was going to mention it in board comments, but it's a perfect time to do so. At, at some point, we have to start having real concrete conversations about what the future is of this location and what that looks like in the future. I, I know that certainly we have to have air conditioning and the cooling towers are vitally important, but we also are aware that the bathrooms have just failed recently, at least the men's rooms on a couple of the buildings. And, and so we, and from what I understand, the pipes are crumbling underneath. So it's not something that can be easily replaced. We, board, we do have to have very concrete conversations very soon. And so I know that as we are awaiting the survey studies from the consultants, I believe that potentially can help drive some of that for us. So I know we're anxiously anticipating those survey results coming back in hopefully March and April, and maybe that will gear us in the right direction. But thank you for bringing this up, Vice Chair. I too am going to vote in favor of this, but we, it's just a key indicator that we need to have real conversation about what the future of this location is.
Madam Chair, um, we've had conversations about doing different things. The reason we're here in this building now where we are is because we had issues at the old board building. So, um, I think at some point, um, those conversations stopped. I think those conversations need to be picked up again and not only just having conversations, but trying to figure out what we are going to do and putting some type of plan of action in place. We do know these are, this, I think, this campus is from the 50s or 40s, late 40s. So we're dealing with some schools that's almost 100 years old very soon. So we really need to look at what we're going to do.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. So Dr. Gullett, can we ensure that we have a work session agenda item coming up sometime in the spring possibly to start having conversation revisited about our future plans?
Certainly, Madam Chair. To, to clarify though, the board is, uh, would like us to bring options forward when we get the results back from that long-range study and, okay, we'll be happy to do that. Sure, thank you.
Okay, back on, um, item twenty-three point one, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 school staffing ratios?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Board, I do have one item to note on this. Thank you so much for all the hard work that we put in this morning and the hours of work that we, um, put in to ensure that this would be accurate. I did have a phone call with Ms. Morant just before this meeting, and I just want to ensure that what I believe we intend is not necessarily indicated in writing. And so I just, the intention is accurate, but the writing is not. So this is specifically to elementary school P E teachers. At 1,000-plus students, there will be three P E teachers plus two P E techs.
That's not there.
And that's not there. Uh, but that is the indication and what our intention was, that certainly if you have more students, you're not losing adults. Because we want to ensure that we have, so that it doesn't say that. So I just want to make sure that that's what we're approving, and Ms. Morant assured me that that, it was just not a carryover. Um, but I believe that is this board's intention to assure that we aren't losing adults just because we've added students. So that P E teacher at the elementary level at 1,000-plus students will be three teachers plus two P E techs. That was my only comment. Any other discussion on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I just noticed one thing that I hadn't noticed before. Do we only have behavior techs at elementary?
No.
No.
I didn't think so. So on the first page of the document, next to behavior technician based on specific student needs, there's an E in the third column, which would indicate that we only have behavior technicians based on student needs at elementary, which I don't think is accurate. But I could be wrong. Been a very long time.
I've seen them in those.
Yep. I mean, I do believe they're in other places, so I just want to speak to that. And if maybe I could think of, I guess, could the board just come to consensus that we need to add an M and an H there to indicate that behavior tech's based on student needs throughout the whole district at every level?
If that's, um, I just want to make sure that's what, this, yes. So I'm seeing heading, heads nod. Okay, good, yes, so.
We see them there.
I know. So some of this is just, um, through all of the cleanup from all of the versions. So thank you for bringing that up, Dr. James. So, um, those two minor typographical concerns here, um, with that, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. We have school staffing ratios. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment to Supply Chain Assistance Funding Award?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Dr. James, I understand you pulled item C twenty-two point one and you wish to have further discussion?
Just brief discussion. Um, I spoke with Ms. Dobbins about this item, and I want to just draw awareness to the community. Um, the award is almost doubling from what it was initially given. And I first drew question to where the money was coming from, but we, the money is coming from the federal government. So it's not money that's coming from within our own budget. But I want to just draw awareness to how expensive things have gotten. Essentially, the initial cost for, for this was, has now doubled, and we're not even through three quarters of the school year. And so I just want the community to be, as we, as, as we're going to continue to go into in-depth conversation about money like we did this morning, we have to be very aware and vigilant that things are costing more money every single day, and that's just going to require a lot of, um, in-depth conversation as a board. And I'm grateful that this money is coming from a bucket that's outside of Marion County so that we don't have to find a way to supplement that. I'm grateful for that. But there are going to come things soon that are coming in front of us that we have to shift within our own budget. And our job is to be as fiscally responsible as possible. So I really just wanted to highlight the cost of food. I think Ms. Dobbins said upwards of 40% increase in the cost of food, uh, just since the school year began. And that is incredibly significant, not just for feeding our students here, but for all of our families, because that cost is relative to our community. And so I'm just, uh, bringing awareness.
Thank you, Dr. James. Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for February 23rd, 2023 at nine o'clock a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the update of Acceleration Academy and Southwest localized rezoning update. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for March 9th, 2023 at nine a.m. The purpose of the work session is, is to discuss Code of Student Conduct Revisions, one of two, Alternative Placement, and Code of Civility. With that, we will go into board member comments, and, uh, we'll start actually, um, with Ms. Martinez Lopez. Do you have anything for us?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gullett?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, just briefly, this morning I announced our great news that we were selected as the District of the Year nationally from Cambridge International. Wanted to share the data point, one of the data points. In, in addition to strong student performance, we expanded our access to the Cambridge exams by 38%. Um, so just wanted to, um, bring awareness to that and the great work of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett. Dr. James?
Good evening, families and staff. My comments this evening will be brief. We had a productive day and made decisions regarding making the staffing at our schools a top priority for the 23-24 school year. I acknowledge that bolstering these supports comes at a price, and we will have to shift funding from one bucket to another to accommodate this request. I do not take this lightly and know this task will be cumbersome and uncomfortable. This evening, we also, um, voted in our consent agenda to discuss our rezoning plan for the southwest side of our county. This is another decision that I know I will not take lightly. When I was elected, I made a commitment to have difficult and uncomfortable conversations in an effort to do what is best for students, always. We have a plethora of uncomfortable decisions to make in the near future, and I will always look to our community, the people that I serve, for guidance for these tough decisions. This job that I have been blessed to have is to serve you all, and serve is what I will do to the best of my ability. I will leave you on this Valentine's Day with a quote by Steve Jobs. "The only way to do great work is to love what you do." I do love this job and what I've been afforded the privilege to do by all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Good evening, everyone. Happy Valentine's Day to all. Look like we may be able to have some of this Valentine's Day, uh, festivity, hopefully, to make some people happy. I do want to, um, address that it is Black History Month this month. And, um, I congratulate all these schools and the classrooms. And as you go around the schools, you'll see different activities at certain schools where they are, uh, celebrating, uh, Black History Month. This month, our school district also has the, the Black History Gala that's going to be at Howard Academy, and looking forward to that. Couple, couple of our, our staff members are going to be inducted into that Black History Hall of Fame, uh, one being Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, our Chief Financial Officer, and Ms. Juan Tenisha Morant, our, uh, Chief, uh, H R Director. So, um, congratulations to both of them as well. And then there are several other inductees who all were, um, employees of the Marion County Public School District, one being posthumously Mr. Claude Neesman, my frat brother that retired from Dunellen High School, and, um, Ms., um, Rose Thomas from Dunellen, who retired from Dunellen Middle School as a dean. So, um, we have some great legacy here in this county, in our school district, and, um, looking forward to those. We had a wonderful Golden Apple Gala a couple of weeks ago, a couple of weekends ago. And, um, truly, I, I have to say that it was, um, the highlight for me was seeing the kids that were involved in the gala, um, and seeing how that came together with our staff. Uh, I, I hope, I hope that's something that happens every year, to be honest with you. Uh, Mr. Christian always does a good job, and his musical ability just continues to just impress me. So thank you, Kevin, for what you did, and, uh, thank you for such a beautiful gala that we had. Today, we, um, we went over staffing plans and, let me say this, it wasn't just today. It was several times, several times we went over this thing. And we, it kept getting kicked back and kicked back and kicked back. And, um, and, and oftentimes frustrations come out of things coming back and forth, and back and forth, back and forth. And there, I even got frustrated because I was like, when are we going to get this thing done and help the district to move to where it needs to move to with that? I want to tell our staff who put together this, this staffing plan, um, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for going back, for your willingness to go back to the drawing board and keep pressing it out and pressing it out and pressing it out. Is it going to be perfect? No, it's not going to be perfect. We saw that, the same thing with the calendar. Um, we, we're never going to satisfy everybody in it, but our goal is to do what's best for kids and to get to as close to perfect as we can. And I'm, I'm grateful that tonight we were able to do that and move, push that down the road so that our district can be stabilized and, and know what they're going to be going forward and doing in the days ahead. So thank you, um, to my fellow board members for the work that you guys put in. But truly, the thank you goes out to the staff and superintendent your team that put that, those efforts in because I can tell you, if I was sitting on the other side and some of you were asking me some of the questions and some of the stuff that you were putting at me, I probably would have went off a long time ago. But I'm grateful that we had some professional people that held their own and did not get too frustrated, but they just went back to the drawing board and worked it out. So thank you, guys, for the efforts that you did. I truly appreciate that and know that you are appreciated. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Vice Chair Thrower?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, and happy Valentine's Day to all. And, and I will remain convinced that within all of the challenges that we certainly have, that there's always even more, um, opportunities to, to celebrate the huge and important work that each and every one of us that, um, is employed by Marion County Public Schools have the ability and capability, um, to do and contribute. And, and I was reminded of that again tonight, all over again, by our Southeastern Youth Fair representatives, Kylie and, and Frank. And, and Kylie really touched my heart with, you know, sharing that, that she really didn't even have any background with animals, you know, till six years ago. And if it weren't for the educational opportunities that were being offered to her through Marion County Public Schools, um, she wouldn't have had that opportunity necessarily. So not only did she have that opportunity offered to her, but, but she embraced it. And to hear what she has learned, um, about working with animals, about the financial literacy piece, uh, there are, the, the opportunity to work with your peers, to work towards a goal. Uh, there's just so many wonderful embedded lessons in our C T E programs. And we have a, a proud agriculture history here in Marion County. And, and it was just great to see, um, uh, such a strong representative of that in, in both Kylie and Frank. And, uh, I'll put this on the record too, I really do miss the, them bringing the animals too. It'd be really easy to slide them in through the side door here. I mean, you know, it's not that hard to carry in a chicken, right? So maybe we could, maybe we could add that back for, for next year. Somehow after COVID, you know, or during COVID, that stopped. And I personally would look forward to, to seeing that back because I, I truly believe that doing what's right and doing your best and treating others the way you want to be treated also extends, um, to our, to our animal and, and pet friends, regardless of what they're being raised for. You know, there's a right way and a wrong way, um, to treat everybody. So I really appreciate, um, that program and all of the important lessons that it teaches. And I'm just looking forward to, uh, the continued, um, unfurling of all of the results of the efforts that so many people are putting in every day. A lot of hours, a lot of agonizing, a lot of really wanting to get it right. And, and, you know, we're not going to rest until we have a strong, very deeply embedded achievement and operations and just partnerships across the board. You know, that, that is what we are here for, that is our goal. It's what our strategic plan is all about, and I continue to be very excited to be part of it. So that's what I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. I too want to echo the, the thank you to our staff and to the board for the hard work that we put in on this school staffing plan. The one thing that I can say for sure is that whether it's a special board meeting or a special work session or a special call, whatever needs to be done, this board is going to ensure that we put in the work. And I'm grateful to the team for coming alongside us and helping us get it as close to right as we possibly can get it. So thank you again for all that hard work. Congratulations again to Lindsay Bigelow from Ocala Springs, this year's Teacher of the Year. I haven't seen if the golden horse, or apple, I think is its name, has made it out to Ocala Springs, but I'm looking forward to seeing that. Also want to remind the board about the textbook review committees and that we need to get the names of our community members to Ms. Martinez Lopez, if you haven't done that already. I too wanted to offer kudos to Ms. Juan Tenisha Morant and Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis for being inducted into the Black History Museum this weekend. And what's interesting is, um, as Reverend Cummings mentioned, that several of the other individuals also had worked in our schools, but even if they aren't employees, individuals like Jamie Gilmore, who works in our schools regularly, or Dr. Barbara Books, who is definitely providing tutoring for our students. And there's just a lot, uh, obviously, work that Monica Bryant has done so that every one of these individuals, Bishop Stockton, as I mentioned earlier, is, is being inducted as well. Every one of these people, one way or the other, has touched students in Marion County, even Regus Woods with his amazing testimonials and his great public speaking that he does. And. and Drayton Florence, obviously a product of Marion County. So I, I almost mentioned everyone. Okay, so who hasn't been mentioned? Cynthia Graham, love everything she does, and Carolyn Adams as well. I think you mentioned everybody else. So that covers the whole little gamut here. So that's going to be a wonderful event this weekend at the Mary Sue Rich Center at Reed Place, and I'm looking forward to honoring all of those inductees. Board, I had just a couple of other minor things, well, minor slash major. We've been talking about Marion County Day in Tallahassee that's coming up on March twenty-ninth. That is still something that I believe we want to participate in, but I did want to make you aware that the county is intending to go up the night before and have dinner and all of that, and we actually have a board meeting on that evening. So I don't believe that's something that we will be able to do. That's, they go up the day before for that particular day. So as we get a little closer to March twenty-ninth, we can figure out how we want to participate in Marion County Day. It is the day that all of the county government goes up, and I think that it would be great for us to be a part of that, to highlight our part in Marion County on that day. But as we get a little closer, we'll, we'll figure out some logistics on that specific date. However, we are scheduled to visit Tallahassee on next Tuesday, as you all are aware, February twenty-first. I haven't, we haven't received the schedule yet from Ms. Janice Seawitz, who's helping us with that, but I received communication that at least one of our representatives has asked for a meeting at nine a.m. So I did want to ask the Board if there is an interest for us to go up the night before, or if we want to get up at five o'clock that morning. Well, again, we haven't seen the whole schedule, but again, I'd receive at least information that one of our representatives wants a nine a.m. meeting. So if we're interested in going up the night before, which would be Monday evening, the twentieth, does that, no? We're.
I will drive up in the morning.
In the morning? Okay. So Board, I guess if we want to go up the night before, then we can get with Ms. Martinez-Lopez or Mr. Christians' assistant to get that scheduled if we want to work on that?
Okay.
All right. Well, that is all I had for my board comments. Thank you so much. So before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January twenty-fourth, 2023. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted timely requests to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to also note that we do have, I believe we have public-facing document. I'm looking for it now. I believe we do. Is it in alternative placements? We will just double-check that. I know that there is a public-facing document that we have, and I'm not certain that it is in the public-facing area, but we will get that corrected. That's my mistake for not catching that the first time.
Are you looking for the student discipline report?
That is what I'm looking for. In administrative content, is that public-facing or is that just for us? That's, everybody can see that?
Administrative content is public-facing, I believe. Executive is for us.
Okay, perfect. So the public should be able to see the student discipline report at items twenty-seven or twenty-six point one, twenty-six point two, twenty-seven point one, twenty-seven point two, and twenty-seven point three. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can I do one quick correction?
Okay.
Because I, I don't want it to go out and it be wrong. You mentioned that the gala was this week. It's the twenty-fourth.
I'm sorry. You are correct on that.
I just don't want.
I even have it right in front of me.
I was.
I'm so sorry.
I don't want to get, I don't want to get a thousand phone calls.
Thank you. Friday, I'll read it directly. I even had the invitation pulled up.
Yes.
Friday, February twenty-fourth, 2023, seven p.m. at the Mary Sue Rich Center at Reed Place. Thank you for that correction.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Reverend Cummings? I, I was looking at everyone's pictures. I totally missed that. Thank you for that correction. Okay. So back on item twenty-seven point one, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student J D twenty-three dash zero one zero two E, J D twenty-three dash zero one zero five, J D twenty-three dash zero one zero six, and J D twenty-three dash zero one zero seven with educational services for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year and the first semester of the 2023-2024 school year?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. James.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to?
I think you skipped item twenty-six.
Yeah. Alternative placements.
We got talking about the Mary Sue Rich Center and.
No, I, I did ask all of that about the items. Before addressing expulsion matters, we acknowledged that alternative placements had been before the Board.
Okay.
And I asked Ms. Martinez Lopez if anyone had been here to speak.
Did we vote on the alternative placement?
We don't vote on that? We don't.
Okay.
Twenty-seven point one.
Correct. And we just voted on that one.
Okay. I apologize.
That's fine.
We just voted on, wait a minute, wait, wait, stop. We just voted on what?
Twenty-seven point one.
Okay.
Twenty-seven point one, yes.
Okay.
And we don't vote on twenty-six point one or twenty-six point two. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students J D twenty-three dash zero one zero nine, J D twenty-three dash zero one one two E, J D twenty-three dash zero one one four, J D twenty-three dash zero one one six, J D twenty-three dash zero one one seven, J D twenty-three dash zero one one eight, J D twenty-three dash zero one two zero, and J D twenty-three dash zero one two one with educational services for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year and the entire 2023-2024 school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower.
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of J D twenty-two dash zero zero one five with educational services for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes four zero. With that, we do have an item that will be off-air, so we as a Board need to go ahead and recess at this point. But thank you all for attending this evening as we clear the room. Thank you. Recessing at six forty-nine p.m.